Name is Vince Noblet, President of the Speedway Town Council. Today is October 9th, 2023, and it's 7:02 PM. I want to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will everybody silence their cell phones? Start off by introducing the office. On my far right, our town manager, Grant Kleinins.
Good evening.
To his left, Councilor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
To her left, Councilor David Lindsey.
Good evening.
My far left, Town Council Attorney, Bob Clutter.
Howdy do.
Next to Bob is our Town Clerk Treasurer, Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Next to Philip, on his right, is our Town Councilor, Gary Rix.
Good evening.
My immediate left is Councilor Vice President, Gary Pettigga.
Hello.
We'll head and start off on the minutes. Minutes have been distributed to council. Through these minutes as submitted, signify by saying aye. All those in favor?
I think you just can go with a concurrence on.
Concurrence, aye, we got it.
Aye, aye, aye.
Next on the agenda is recognition of the Speedway Hometown Parade organizers. I'm going to go ahead and ask Gina Grove to come up. And Lane Warner. Christina Young.
It's just the two of us.
Just the two of you, that's fine. I just want to take this opportunity to show the public who put all the time and effort into putting on a great hometown parade. I think I've heard nothing but positive comments about the job that you've done. I think the residents of the town of Speedway were very appreciative that we had beautiful weather. And you got to take advantage of that way, you can get it. But, and everybody had a chance, I think no kid went home without candy. And I just thought I'd give you a chance to say a few things, you know, what your thoughts are on the, on the project as you develop.
Well, we were, as a committee, we were all really thrilled and pleasantly surprised out the participation. And also just the people that came out and watched. It was what we were all hoping for and envisioning. So to see that come, come true, it was really, really a great day. So we appreciate everyone's support in the, in the first parade for the Speedway Hometown Parade.
Any other comments from council?
I mean, I just, I echo what you say. It was great. My family went and watched. Fantastic. I mean, there's no, I mean, it was just great.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the hard work.
Fifty groups, that's amazing. Yeah, and how many total participants?
Oh, gosh, we didn't add them all up.
Seven or eight hundred, wasn't it?
It was around eight hundred.
Yeah, it's amazing. You know, I think back to three, four years ago, you're, you're starting to talk to folks about it, including members of the council. COVID hit, obviously I put a delay on some things, but you just stuck with it, Gina, and then recruited a great team. Congrats on all that.
I definitely want to thank those that weren't able to make it tonight. I'm sure there's, there's tons of people that participated and the number of workers that were there checking people in, making sure everybody got off on time. And, you know, that, that makes a great event. And it seems like, I also want to thank Police Force Chief, you guys did a great job of keeping everybody safe. I think it went smooth, I didn't see any disruptions to the traffic and were able to get through that. Yeah, and we had a fire truck involved. You know, next time if it got any hotter, I might need sprayed down. You could charge, you could make money for that, you know, from that standpoint. But no, we had a really good time. Thank you very much for coming tonight, and I look forward to the parade in the future.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is, is the proclamation honoring Battalion Chief, Chief Chaney. And I'll turn that over to David Lindsey.
Yeah.
Chief.
Chief Chaney and Dawn, if you would come up. Or you can stay there, I know how you look the line light.
I can hear it.
All right, Chief, I'm going to read from here first.
Absolutely.
So proclamation honoring Everett M. Chaney with the Speedway Fire Department. Whereas Everett M. Chaney was hired by the Speedway Fire Department on September 11th, 1993. And whereas Everett served as a firefighter lieutenant and battalion chief during his time as a Speedway firefighter. And whereas Everett also served as the department's Public Information Officer, District President of Local 416, Fire Inspector, Fire Investigator, the Department Logistics Chief for Events, EOD for Special Events in downtown Indianapolis, Incident Command at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, and a member of Indiana Task Force One. And whereas Everett retired from the Speedway Fire Department on September 15th, 2023, after 30 years of dedicated service to the department and the town of Speedway. And whereas the citizens of the town of Speedway and the Speedway Town Council wish to express their sincere gratitude and appreciation for Everett's 30 years of service to the Speedway Fire Department and the town of Speedway, and a lifetime of commitment to our community, the state of Indiana, and the United States of America. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Speedway Town Council does hereby proclaim the 9th day of October 2023 as Everett M. Chaney Day in the town of Speedway, adopted this 9th day of October 2023 by the Speedway Town Council.
All right. Thirty years.
David. Excellent. So we also have a presentation for Chief Chaney.
That's great.
His board with his axe embedded with his name. And it reads in recognition of 30 years of outstanding service to the Speedway Fire Department, presented to Battalion Chief Everett Michael Chaney.
Chief, could you hold that up?
Yeah, we can.
Together.
Together. Very nice. Well deserved. We also have something else that a lot of guys don't get. He forgot to take it. It was, it wasn't nailed down, but Mike, there's your door plate. And we are presenting Mike with his retirees badge and a gift from all the firefighters and Christie and Johnny Russell. So congratulations.
All right.
I think Mike wants to say a few words. He's, he's never short on words.
PIO, what do you do?
So pardon the glasses, I've gone gray haired, half deaf and blind.
And goatee, I know.
Serving the town, so. Just a couple of thoughts I jotted down and changed, as you can see, several times. What put me on the path to Speedway? In my youth, my life was saved from drowning by a gentleman who then challenged me to be more alert to my surroundings. And when I see someone that needs help, help them. And I didn't, I never forgot that. And I've spent my life trying to do just that. Whether it was through services in airborne ranger medic or throughout my life in general, for reasons that escaped me, situations and persons in immediate danger, and you can ask my family about this, seemed to follow me. And with that in mind, it makes sense that I ran into Joe Rush, who I'd known for years during my baseball time. And 31 years ago, ran into Joe and he extended me the opportunity to apply to the fire department. And I thought, who the heck would want to do that? Through this process, I came to know the town and the people of Speedway and the men of the SFD who have become my brothers. The town and the people worth sacrificing for. And I have done so for 30 years to the best of my ability. So as I said, that these things seem to follow me. And you can ask my wife Dawn, or my daughter Mackenzie, ask them about what happened two days into my retirement when we're eating dinner at our house. We're on our vacation trip just days ago. They're good stories, I'll spare you. And even though these things seem, seem to still call me out, it's time for me to retire. Firefighting is a rough, unforgiving, sworn calling. It's not for everyone. But if you're strong enough, brave enough, smart enough, and lucky enough, you might become a firefighter. It definitely is a young man's game, and so I bow to the young men behind me. Hopefully I'm leaving this better than I found it. I wore a few different hats, so I tried to, tried to make sure that I was helping as much as I could. I want to say thank you for, to the town of Speedway for allowing me the honor to serve through the days and nights for 30 years. And to the citizens of Speedway for treating your firefighters well. To my wife Dawn, thank you for saving my life all those years ago and staying by my side in spite of myself. To my daughter Mackenzie, all you've ever known is firefighter dad. While I'll still be here, I'm just going to be home a lot more. And to my mom and the rest of my family, thank you for setting the example for me throughout my life. And just a couple more folks here. To Chiefs Fishburne, Millhorn, Hartman, and Wyatt, thank you for everything. Thank you to Lieutenant Eric Emerson for saving me while I was saving Chief Adi on that rooftop fire years ago. Thank you to Tom Crosley for catching me when I was falling off of a roof. Thank you to my SFD brothers. Thank you for having my back and allowing me the honor of being a brother to you all. Look out for each other and stay safe. I love you guys.
Not going to follow that.
Congratulations.
You did a great job.
Isn't that fitting, they caught a run?
Mm-hmm.
It's the only way you'd have it. Thanks boss.
I like the way you said that, they caught a run.
Yeah.
Run caught them.
Okay, I'll move on. Item number five, approval of professional services proposal with Christopher B. Burke for the stormwater utility rate study. Grant?
Yes, thank you. So we, we've been discussing this proposal for, for a couple of years now. So Christopher B. Burke has helped the town in the past with stormwater engineering, the separation on, in the town, they've been a good partner to the town. We asked them to put together a proposal to look at helping us to understand the cost associated with developing a stormwater utility. So this, this proposal this evening will have them put together a capital improvements plan, look at rates that might fund that plan, also assist us in the process of discussions. Although the $42,000 estimated fee is non-inclusive of them participating in any required public meetings, potentially next year or the year after. So that is a service I would like to discuss with the council maybe at a later time. But I think tonight, we're asking for approval of the $42,000 fee for this study that will take about six months to accomplish. So it will be for the new council to decide and discuss those things next year. But this is a, this is really a step in the direction that we need because we do have stormwater projects and issues throughout the town. We do maintain dry run ditch. That's a big part of what our, our staff does, from mowing to debris removal, repairing maintenance of the duckbill intakes and outfalls in there. And there are costs associated with that. And we have to look and try to better understand what those costs are and how we potentially fund those. So I would recommend approval of this. We did secure another proposal from another engineering firm. It was significantly higher than this, and therefore we recommend this proposal.
President Noblet, I move that we approve the professional services proposal from Christopher B. Burke for the stormwater utility rate study.
Second. I got a motion and a second, so I'll open it up for any questions of Grant concerning this proposal.
Grant, there are a number of other communities and cities that have these, correct?
Yes.
We're, we're actually one of the few that do not.
Yeah, I would say we definitely are one of the few that do not.
That's statewide?
I would say statewide, yes, and nationwide frankly.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I, maybe more of a note, I, a few years ago when we, we built a retention pond in, in the field that Indianapolis Motor Speedway owns just north of the Coca-Cola plant. I believe they were helpful in that project as well.
They were.
Upstream and downstream.
Yep.
They do work for the city of Indianapolis on these same streams.
Hearing no other questions, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor for a professional services proposal with Christopher B. Burke for the stormwater utility rate study, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda is approval of agreement between the town of Speedway and American Structure Point for the Eagle Creek sanitary siphon emergency repair. Grant, can you tell them?
Yes, so a couple of, nearly two months ago, not quite two months ago, we had an unfortunate incident where our Eagle Creek siphon was damaged and damaged to the point that it started to release untreated sewer into the creek. That was identified, a company was hired to secure that, divert that flow around, pump it then to the force main that wasn't broken on the east side of that, that Eagle Creek area. And since then, we've been looking at several different alternatives to repairing that. The proposal before you tonight is with American Structure Point. They have a fee not to exceed $30,000. So that means if they only spend $20,000 worth of time, they will bill us $20,000. So it's not to exceed 30,000. They will assist us in finalizing and developing all the alternatives. We have looked at a couple of different alternatives. The one that we probably are leaning towards is a directional bore under the creek to get away from this maintenance issue and headache. And hopefully that will solve the problem. That repair, as we have mentioned to the council, is not, not cheap. It will probably run in the neighborhood of 350 to 500,000, depending on the bidding environment. Once we get that out to get quotes and bid over the next month or six weeks. But Structure Point's assistance here will help us get a permit acquired, quotes and proposals received and reviewed and get this work done, hopefully, before it starts to get really cold. So I recommend approval of this proposal. I think that Structure Point's done a good job in the past. We haven't used them in our wastewater or water areas for quite a while. But we, we did choose to use them because I think they had some ideas that will assist us in this process. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
I'll, I have a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the agreement between the town of Speedway and American Structure Point for emergency repair.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. I'll now open up for questions to Grant concerning the work that would be done. Any questions for Grant?
Once they, once they start work, Grant, what's the timeframe of this getting completed and?
So they, they have committed to two months to get all this engineering permitting, alternatives reviewed. That's kind of their timeline, so two months from tomorrow. And they've already actually started looking at some options. Once we approve this, we can then further dive into those options. They've given us that consulting fee for no charge at this point. But about two months. And then the repair probably will be about 30 days, 30 to 45 days if it all goes well. And we have good weather.
And that's on the front end of winter, not the?
Yeah, it should be on the front of, I mean, we're looking at around December to get that wrapped up and repaired.
So just from the, I would say the citizen's perspective, then normally you see boring equipment out there for lines, communication lines, but this is talking about, about a 20 inch hole?
Yeah.
Going to go 10 feet underneath Eagle Creek and come back up on the other side?
Yeah.
To, and then it's going to be, there's going to be two pipes going through it?
Is that correct? Yes, yep.
10 inch pipes? So that will give us plenty capacity moving forward if we make any changes to
Yes.
the line, the pump station that's
On 10th Street. Yep, it will.
Okay. Any other questions for Grant?
The, the funds to, it's not going to sound right. The funds to fund this or pay for it?
Yeah.
Only one thing to say it. We have the funds, obviously, to, to repair this.
I don't know that we have much of a choice not to repair it.
Yeah, right.
We do have reserves in the sewer.
Okay. Didn't probably sound right, but.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely trying, trying to be cost concerned with this. It's, it's not something we want to spend more money than we have to, but we got to repair it. In fact, if we don't repair it, we will incur fines. And because we are diverting the flow, it's not going into the creek, we're not receiving fines at this point. And that's, that costs about 30,000 a month, so it's not inexpensive. Big pumps, lots of diesel fuel, have to be monitored and secured, so it's, it's not a cheap alternative. We want to get that fixed as soon as possible.
No other questions, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. The approval of agreement between the town of Speedway and American Structure Point for the Eagle Creek sanitary siphon emergency repair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. Item seven is a motion to approve the purchase and ordering of police all-terrain vehicles.
Yep, Grant. So before you this evening, and I actually put an additional one from Westfield Powersports at your place, your desk. What happened was, I think I had it printed on the front and back. When Edder made the copies on Friday, it didn't pick up the, the back of the one side. So these are three separate proposals received by our chief administration, our police administration, for the replacement of these all-terrain vehicles. The one that we are recommending is Indy Powersports Polaris with a price of 15.9 per unit. The others were significantly higher than that for the same product. We are also receiving a $4,000 credit for the trade-in of some older vehicles. So with that, the others were not interested in giving us $4,000 for our 20, 20-plus year old, 14-year-old ATV. So this is, I think, a pretty good deal. We did receive the three quotes as required. And we would like to recommend approval so that these can be ordered, delivered, and paid for. I know, Philip, I don't know if you have any comments about that fund that will, they will be paid for, but I'll answer any questions as will Chief, if you have any questions about the proposals.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase and ordering of the police all-terrain vehicles as described by our town manager.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Chief, how many vehicles are we talking about? Just two.
Yes, they, those vehicles were ordered and purchased back in 2009. So they're approaching 14 years old. And as Grant mentioned, two of the vendors wouldn't even entertain a trade-in on the vehicles we have. And Indy Powersports, as they said, they're going to give us 4,000 a piece for the trade-in, which drops the price significantly for the, for the new vehicles. So the ones we have still operational, but at 14 years, we know at some point in a crucial time, we utilize those for racing events, other events in town. And we just know at some point, at 14 years old, we're probably going to have a, a big catastrophic failure on one of those vehicles, so.
Chief, could you or Philip just explain the fund that these come out of, please?
It, it comes out of the motorcycle fund, that's what we use to replace our motorcycles. That fund is financed, are through donations to the, to the police department. So it does not actually come out of the general fund or the budget for the town. That's through donated funds to the police department, so.
I've seen them being used during racing events and things like that. What, you know, what are some other occasions that you guys?
Racing events, we've used them for the parades. When we have manpower that allocates, we've actually gotten those out and patrolled in the, the apartment complexes and the, during the warm months. We hope to utilize those when we get full manpower in the warm months to, to patrol the trails and utilize them for various operations that, that we've used in the past and in the future, so.
Yeah, I could see why they're needed. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. President, before you call for a vote, if the motion could be clarified that you're, if you do approve the motion, that you're agreeing to purchase this and for the payment at time of delivery so that I can cut the check ahead of time. The normal course of order is that we don't pay for things until we've received them, but obviously that's a little bit difficult when you're talking about a vehicle, so.
So amended.
Second amendment.
Okay, we go ahead and if there's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and call for a vote on the motion to approve the purchase and ordering of the police all-terrain vehicles. That's stated by Chief and, and addressed in terms of our Town Clerk Treasurer, too. All those in favor of approving the purchase and making payment at the time of delivery, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. Okay, next is ordinance 1381, approval of the 2024 budget, Civil Town of Speedway, second reading. Philip?
Mr. President, this is our second hearing on all four of the budget ordinances before you today. We had our first reading and our public hearing on September 25th. These, both of these meetings were advertised in September. And the public can see these ordinances as well as receive additional notifications about budget items at www.budgetnotices.in.gov. 1381 is for the Speedway Civil Town. And it's for an adopted budget of $18 million 23, or $18 million 23,920 in terms of our in terms of our funds that are reviewed by the Department of Local Government and Finance, and then an additional $2,215,533 in public safety and law enforcement, continuing education funds that are not reviewed by the Department of Local Government Finance.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the ordinance 1381 for the funds and the home-ruled funds as presented by our clerk treasurer.
Second.
Again, a motion and a second. So, you go ahead and open up to discussion. Questions are from town clerk treasurer on 1381.
I say it every year, but this is a process that was started July?
June.
June.
We started even earlier this year since we knew we would be...
May and June.
So, this is not just something that's just thought up overnight. It's a lot of hard work from your office, Philip, and Grant as well, and the department heads, their input. So, I feel like we're kind of skimming over tonight, but we're not. It's been going on for several months, so just want to acknowledge that for everyone.
Any other comments or questions?
I just agree with David. I think the other thing I would add to that is that there were two nights where there was, we had public meetings and a few people from the public showed up. They had the opportunity to question or make comments. And then, of course, last, in our last meeting, we, in first reading, we had hearings, a public hearing. They were able to also make comments or speak.
Okay. Any other questions, amendments? If not, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on ordinance 1381, approval of the 2024 budget for the civil town of Speedway, second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 1382, approval of 2024 budget for the school town of Speedway, second reading.
Mr. President, this will be for an adopted budget of $32,156,640. That includes the referendum fund, operations, education, and debt service for the schools.
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance 1382 for second reading for the budget of 2024 Speedway Town Schools.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I'll open it up for discussion. Any questions or comments in relationship to the school budget 2024? Again, I'm sure there's an awful lot of work that went into this budget in relationship to also the referendum dollars, tax levy, and... Is there any other comments?
I like, I guess I would make the comment that schools presented during those, one of those evenings. Two weeks ago, there was the opportunity for the public to have visibility to that, and we're one of the few communities where, in the state, where the municipality actually is involved in approving the school budget. And I think that's an extra check and balance. It's worked well for us, obviously.
No further comment. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on ordinance 1382, approval of the 2024 budget for the schools of the town of Speedway. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda is ordinance 1383.
Mr. President, this is for the library system here in Speedway and an adopted budget amount of $1,462,134 that comprises their general fund.
Mr. President, I make a motion we approve ordinance 1383 on second reading this evening.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any comments or questions?
I'd like to thank members of our library board that are with us again for a second hearing. Thank you for attending tonight.
And thank you for the SUD machine. That was really amazing. Sorry.
That was the community night.
At the community day, yeah. It was amazing.
That was a big event.
Had nothing to do with the budget, but wanted to thank them.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote of ordinance 1383, approval of the 2024 budget for the Speedway Public Library. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next is ordinance 1384, approval of the 2024 budget for the Speedway Public Transportation.
Mr. President, the Public Transportation Board's adopted budget would be $380,916.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1384, which is the 2024 budget for the Speedway Public Transportation Board, second reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I'll open up to any questions or comments. During that, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on ordinance 1384, approval of 2024 budget for Speedway Public Transportation, on second reading. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Thank you. This evening, I'm not asking for any utility adjustments, but I am asking for your approval of the claims for the time period of September 25th through October 4th of this year in an amount of $1,822,558.55.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as presented by the clerk treasurer.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. I'll open up to any questions for the town clerk treasurer in relationships to those claims. Seeing no questions or comments, I go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the claims as submitted by the town clerk treasurer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up is a report from our department supervisors. We had then Police Chief Chuck Upchurch. Oh.
I did that to Chuck the other day, so.
I was waiting, too. Like, I know Cheryl for me. Thank you, counsel. I'll be brief tonight. Just so you know, we have begun taking pre-applications for, in anticipation for our two officers that we know are going to be leaving the first part, well, one the first part of the year, one in April and one in August. So, if you see our social media sites, and you'll notice that we have accepted pre-apps, so anyone that has an interest in becoming a police officer, then please submit a pre-application, and we'll go through the process and see if you're one of those folks that we'd like to hire, so.
Chief, these are retirees that are going to be leaving, is that correct?
Yes, yes. We have two in the drop program.
Thank you.
So, Chuck Azell, I think, is scheduled the first of April, and then Officer Brad Weaver's in August. So, also, we have begun the process. Code Enforcement Joe Kramer's going to be leaving us on October 13th, so we're working with our human resources specialists to begin to post that position, and we're going to work on filling that as expeditiously as we can. So, just really want to thank everyone for coming out for our community day about a week and a half.
Week and a half ago.
So, we went through 240 hot dogs, managed to get Bob to help us cook hot dogs. I did most of the work, but... That's not true. Bob and I, we were a pretty good team, so, but we did enjoy the evening and wanted to thank everyone for coming out and enjoying the evening with us. So, and we are well aware that there are a lot of folks in town that we hear speeding complaints, and we do follow up on those. And just so, for the general public, just so they know, so far this year, we have already issued 5,614 traffic citations, and we've issued 751 warnings. So, we did a little bit of a comparison study with some of the communities around us, and in 2022, it looks like Brownsburg made 6,000 traffic stops and issued 733 tickets. And Fishers, a combination in 2022 between their tickets and warnings, they'd issued 4,177. And Carmel, they just have a graph, but it looks like between their tickets and warnings, they were just below about 5,000, so.
Could you repeat our numbers, please?
5,614, and we've issued 700. So, if we go based on where we are at now, by the end of the year, we're issuing about 620 tickets a month. So, if we stay on track, that would be about 7,500 citations and about 1,000 warnings, so. So, we are enforcing traffic. Sometimes it's just not noticeable that we are enforcing traffic, so, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Chief? I've got one for you. Where is, would you say in town is probably the biggest offending area?
You know, I think probably the biggest complaint that we get is not just speed. Usually Lynn Hurst for speed, and we always hit Lynn Hurst during school crossings. You'll notice the police cars on the 1400 block. You'll also notice them at 21st and, or Lynn Hurst and 22nd Street by the elementary and high school. So, I would say the biggest complaint we get with, that's not speeding-related, people not stopping for stoplights, so disregarding stop signals. So, those are everywhere. 10th and Wenton, 10th and Lynn Hurst, Crawfordsville and Lynn Hurst. And unfortunately, when there's a police car there, they stop. When there's not one there, they don't stop, so. And we try to enforce that the best we can, but we just can't be everywhere all at one time, so.
Right. One thing I've noticed is the number of jaywalkers across Crawfordsville Road.
Right.
It seems like the apartments they're going, cutting across to Kroger's or somewhere in the shopping center, and they're just taking their life in their own hands by...
Very dangerous to not cross a pedestrian crossway, yes, so.
Can we issue them tickets for not using crosswalks?
I believe we can. Have we ever?
I'd just hate to see somebody get... I'd hate to see somebody get...
Yes, and we can stop those folks and try to encourage them to, to... I would say in Marion County, a ticket for not crossing, I just can't guarantee you how far that's going to go, but I think we'd probably do better just to stop and encourage them to go to a crosswalk, so.
We have a project upcoming, do we not?
We do.
To improve sidewalks along all of Crawfordsville Road and...
With a crossing alternative as well.
That should, that should be helpful.
Hopefully, that will help, yes.
Is that next year?
It's 2025. It'll bid next fall, but construction won't start until the spring of 2025.
State, those are state grant dollars.
It's through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which comes from Federal Highway Administration, so your gas taxes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Cheryl, our communications director.
I'm out of the mood now. Good evening, everyone. Thought I would touch base on a couple of things that I've shared on the town website and social media lately. The Arts Council recently installed a mural here at the Speedway Municipal Center. It's on the outside wall next to our entrance. It was created from thousands of photos of residents, visitors, different landmarks around the community into a mural that it has the, I think it's the logo and S maybe on there. Isn't that funny? I just looked at it when I came in, and I can't remember what it looks like, but it's really cool to see. It's worth stopping by. The Speedway Home Helpers Program is up and running. It is being led by the Speedway Housing Advisory Council. There are currently 16 homes in Speedway that needs help. What the group is needing more of is volunteers. They basically need more manpower. The first project date is Saturday, October 28th. To volunteer, you'll find all the information on both the Facebook page and the website related to Speedway Home Helpers. If anyone has trouble finding that, they're welcome to email me or on the website, hit the submission button of questions that I can direct to better that way. The scarecrow contests that we have going in town, the town of Speedway and the Chamber of Commerce partnered together and invited Speedway businesses to participate in a scarecrow building display contest. The community is who the judges are for this. The win, the top three winners will be determined by the community's votes. Each display on it has a little sign that has a QR code on it. You simply scan your phone, use your phone, scan the QR code, and it will take you to the voting page. Voting will run through October and will announce the three top winners on October 31st. We did have 23 businesses participate, several on Main and four or five out Crawfordsville Road. We rolled it out to the community the middle of last week, and as of this morning, we had 350 votes totaled on it so far. So, it's actually been pretty well-received.
Whose idea was that?
Cheryl's idea.
It was my idea. Thanks, Kerry. The, you threw my train of thought. Oh, so the numbers on it, the, there's, one of the businesses is leading way ahead of everyone else, and there's three that are all within like one vote of each other. So, if you're out and about, it's worth making the trip to look at them. Some of the folks got really creative. Wanted to go over some upcoming events. October 16th, casual conversations. This will be our fourth quarter one with Grant. We're having it here at the municipal center from 5:30 to 7:00, hoping that will help folks who work after, after 5 o'clock be able to attend. Last time we did it, we did invite department heads to be there to join the chats with Grant. It's just a comfortable, casual, open format, but it's really good dialogue, so it's worth coming to that. October 28th, Speedway Lions Club Halloween Costume Contest will be at the Speedway High School Gym. That will be from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. Also, on October 28th, immediately following the costume contest, is the trunk or treat that's put on by the Parks Department. That will be at the high school, I mean, the parking lot. That's from 5:00 to 6:30. Town trick-or-treat hours are 6:00 to 8:00 on October 31st. Into November, November 11th, the holiday lights and decor on Main Street will be installed, depending on weather, but around the 11th of November. December 6th, Light the Night will take place. That is at DeLara, and some of the, some of the items will be there on Main Street. Will include, as we did last year, Santa Claus visits, crafts, cookies, and a lot more items. That's 5:30 to 7:30, again, on December 6th. And December 9th, Parks and Rec, Tammy Smith is adding a new event this year. We're doing Holiday at the Market. It's a holiday bazaar going to be held here at the municipal center, and that will be from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That is all I have tonight.
Great. Any questions for Cheryl? We're keeping busy.
I am keeping busy.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you. Next up, Fire Chief Bob Fishburne.
Thank you, counsel, and I want to start by thanking Counselor Lindsay for the proclamation for Mike. I know we have another gentleman who retired because of an injury after 22 years, Pete Foltz, who's also a Speedway son, and he'll be coming within the next couple council meetings, whatever works out on his schedule. He's taken care of some things and doing some traveling, so. I also want to thank Nikki for... I also want to thank Nikki for kinda stepping in and helping with Community Night with Tammy being out.
And Nick, Nikki is our HR manager.
Yeah, Nikki Parker, our HR manager. She did a great job and you're right, Grant, the bubble machine kinda upstaged us all, but nobody would have eaten without police and fire there to cook, so let's just keep that in mind. We are in the process of evaluations. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but you know, the library did get us on that, so. We are in the process of doing our annual evaluations, getting those through our company officers, which is something else that Nikki started a couple, you know, right when she got here. She and Grant got those going. Want to encourage everyone to come next Monday. I know department heads, I know I'll be there. If you have questions about fire, the department, our operation, I know that Deputy Chief Alexander will be there for the police department because Chief Upchurch is at a, a national chief's convention, I think, but you know, I think that's a really good chance for people to come and not just ask Grant all the questions and Grant can direct some of those questions to us, so looking forward to that. Our run totals for September were two hundred and ninety-seven runs, two hundred and forty of those, eighty-one percent were EMS and eleven percent were fire runs and fire-related runs and eight percent were PIs or miscellaneous runs. So we're on target to be in the four thousand run range for, for the year, which is a busy year, so. If you don't have anything else, that's all I have. Thanks again for honoring my guy.
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to point out, I think Grant and myself dished out three thousand four hundred and twenty-six cups of ice cream.
Well, then you definitely.
Our forearms were really.
You definitely did.
That might have been high by about three thousand.
Two hundred and forty hot dogs.
Yeah, that might have been high by about three thousand.
Was that one for me, one for you, two for me, one for you, yeah.
You guys were really cool doing that, too.
Yeah. To David Lindsay.
Good time.
I like that one. Chief, that was good, I liked that one.
Next up is Rodney Smith.
Hello. How's everybody doing tonight?
We're doing good.
See? I'll start with the street department, if that's okay.
Yep.
They're cleaning sanitary sewers, yard waste pickup, mowing and, uh, street sweeping and that's all that business is usual there. And for the wastewater, the plant treated ninety-three million gallons for September. Operation, operators have been busy doing building cleanups. Maintenance department has been doing prevent, prevent maintenance on the belt press and business as usual there. For waterworks, we treated sixty-five million gallons of water for September. We're currently working on getting outside painting done. The distribution crew changed out a hundred and six meters, water meters for September, along with exercising valves and flushing dead end mains. And business as usual, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ronnie?
No. Appreciate the report.
Thank you all.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, town manager.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of items, so just a quick update on the thirteen-hundred-block Pocket Park project. I know there's a great deal of interest out there on that. As you know, the contractor who initially installed the flat concrete work as well as the stamped concrete and the top of the stage didn't follow standards. We had to bring that up, force them to demolish and ultimately redo that. So they finally have worked through all their contract issues with their current sub, received their insurance funding. We have a meeting out there on Friday morning at nine AM to finalize all the details. They hope to start redoing the concrete work using DC Construction, who is someone that we've used significantly. They did the sidewalks out in front of the municipal center here this, this summer, but they hope to start maybe in the next week to ten days and that will take three weeks to be accomplished. So we're hoping by, say, that first week in November to be complete with that project. And it's been a, it's been a long time coming and a lot of effort on a lot of staff's parts. The gateway sign project, you can see that a majority of the landscaping has been installed there on that northeast corner and the southern portion of that. They've also completed the foundation for the sign itself. On Friday, we, I, we looked at the letters themselves and the light coming through the letters and different shading. We've identified what we would like to have done. They're finishing up that fabrication and hope to have that sign up by the end of the month. Some of the remaining trees and landscaping may take into November, but they've been doing a great job keeping it watered, using our water right there in the area. We are identifying some issues with some of the irrigation out there and we may ultimately have a small change order to address some of those problems. We have some of the lines that are ruptured or broken and are not working any longer and we, we'd like to correct that. So really good project moving forward and should be done here in the next thirty, thirty days. That's my report this evening.
Okay. Any other questions for Grant? Go ahead and move on to council members. Next up, Gary Pedago, Vice President.
Kinda feel like I beat this horse to death because I talk about it. Not every meeting, but usually every month at least, and that is, there is still an ongoing, pretty close to being a critical shortage of, of blood, platelets, plasma here in central Indiana. I get phone calls and, and emails every week from, from both the Red Cross and the University Blood Center of Indiana. So I encourage people to, to make time, you know, if you're, if you're healthy and physically able, make time to go down and, and donate. You're not gonna get paid for it, but you may be saving somebody's life, so. Payment enough. That's all I have.
Very good. Next up is Counselor Ali Fisher.
I have nothing this evening.
Counselor David Lindsay.
Just two things. First is, I felt like the presentation for Chief Chaney was kinda quick. For thirty years of service, it didn't justify the hard work he's put in and makes me feel old as I am because he started with the town about when I started with the town and both the police and fire losing a lot of knowledge here. A lot of great, great men are leaving both places, so I'm gonna congratulate the chief again for thirty years of service to our town. That's quite, quite, quite an accomplishment.
Well, and I, I will speak to that. We, on his last shift day, we had a three-hour open house at Station Eighty-Eight, which involved the state fire marshal giving him an accommodation. Task Force One was there and then he has a, he knows the date, he doesn't know all of the arrangements. This Sunday, another open house for family, friends and all of those things, but in, in this, in this venue, you know, I, I think it's great that we're doing proclamations. We've, we've never really done that and I know how much Darren appreciated, no matter how, how much Mike appreciated it and we're gonna try to make that kind of a traditional thing, but yeah, thirty years of service and for the rest of the things he's done for Marion County, the state of Indiana and really our country with being deployed to some pretty gruesome things through the task force. Certainly much appreciated and yeah, this is just a drop in the bucket. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And then last is boys sectional, I said it wrong, boys soccer won their sectional championship last Saturday. Congratulations to them. They are playing for the regional Wednesday and it's here at the, the high, high school. If you come out and support them, that'd be great. Information, I believe the boosters are putting out the time and low, or time for that on Wednesday, but congratulations to soccer on that win. That's all I have.
Oh, absolutely. Next up, Counselor Gary Rakes.
I, I would tag on to Counselor Lindsay. I think we have tremendous public safety personnel, but I don't, I can't call him Everett, but Mike Chaney is, is more than a firefighter. He's, he's an amazing person. Started, for me, it started with his military service and being a ranger and you meet him and you get to know him a little bit and you know that's how he was kinda molded and, and whittled away. I mean, he's, he's got a huge heart, but he's also a very tough guy and I think that prepared him well to serve our community and Task Force One and all the other ways that he serves, so I just wanted to tag that as well, David. I think that's, that's a good job of doing that. Just a couple things. Community Night Out, you know, we move our Community Night Out into September, I think, is it June, the rest of the country or a lot of the country does?
August.
Is it August? Thank you. And I like the fact we do because it's cooler, first of all. Second of all, we're not as busy. When we, when we choose the night that's best for our community, we find the night that works well for our community and I think that's fantastic. So thanks for everybody that contributed to that, including several businesses that donated things. The ice cream, for example, was donated by Fun Days and I'm sure there's other things from hamburgers and hot, or hot dogs and other things that were donated or certainly sold at a, a discount. Finally, I wanted to talk about the candidate forum that happened last week. I want to applaud all the candidates that, that were in this facility and handled, handled themselves very professionally, didn't beat each other up. They, they literally talked about what they thought their strengths were and what they thought their needs were for our community and I encouraged them and everybody else in the community to continue to keep that, that type of attitude as we go through the next month and see more, more signs put out, more commercials put out, but, and more social media comments. And I would just encourage everybody on any and or sides to, to continue to have that attitude and just applaud all ten people that participated last week. So with that, that's my final comment.
Great, thank you, Gary. Next I'll move to a report from the council president. There's one item I just want to speak to and that's making a request to the general public. Every year, we have openings for our boards and commissions and this town would not be what we are today without the help of its citizens considering being on boards and commission. It's a lot of dedicated time and really to understand the problems that are facing our community. And if you have any concerns or questions in relationship to what goes on that board, please feel free to talk to Grant or Ed or even call up one of the counselors and we definitely can talk to you about the importance of making sure that we have quality people investing time on that to help us run the town. And also, it's good to get multiple inputs in relationship to things that we're faced with. And that's all I have for the night. If there's no other comments, it is eight oh four PM and I'll call this meeting adjourned.